This is a public conversation. And this essentially is the public's opportunity to ask questions, to talk with us. Anything a school committee member says here is strictly on -- we're not speaking under oath of security. And there are no set topics for this. So if anybody has any questions or anything they want to talk about.
I'm happy to start. I had originally really wanted to come two weeks -- was it two weeks ago? When there was the public meeting about the science program. And I was out of town on a conference, and so I wasn't able to come. But I had been hearing that it would be raised again tonight. But when I looked at the agenda earlier today, I saw -- the only guess I could make was item 13, and I knew I couldn't say that later, nursing a cold. So now I understand, I guess it's going to be moved up. But I'm gonna -- I have soup on the stove, I'm gonna have to go home. But I wanted to say that I've just been following from a distance. I haven't been able to make too many meetings, but I've been following from a distance what's been going on with the science at the high school. And I'm going to be very interested, I guess you'll be reporting on that. Maybe I can watch it on public television. But it just -- I've had a growing number of concerns. And what I would have said two weeks ago was that, both from seeing my own children go through to high school and talking, more importantly, talking to people whose kids are in college, it just seems like it keeps coming back to the same place of relative weakness. I do think the high school in general is quite strong. I've been very impressed with math, LA to history, but it just seems like every year it's -- that's kind of been the weak link. And I've shared some of the concrete concerns with various people that I've experienced firsthand. And I guess what really concerns me is when I hear from parents who volunteered to me that, "Oh, you know, so-and-so's doing great, but they're struggling in their science classes." I hear this over and over again. And it just seems like that's, you know, that's kind of hard evidence. That and the other, I guess, sort of indicative thing is just how many -- how few kids, you know, do well on the AP exams and how few kids are recommended to take the subject exams in science. I know when my son was going through that, it was okay, you know, do math and do history. And he'd taken honor science and everything, but it was just sort of a given that, you know, that was where he was going to do better. I mean, part of that was him, but that seems to be the common belief in any case, and I think it's borne out from science. So I just wanted, you know, and I regret that I wasn't able to come two weeks ago. Because I mean, I'm looking forward to whether there'll be another one, maybe in the spring, with those things moving forward.
I think what's interesting in the science discussion to me is that I've heard many of the same things from parents of graduates, my own kids have reported some of those same kinds of things to me. Where I see a disconnect, and I think hopefully the conversations that we have as we move forward will be able to make better connections, is the kids that are in high school today, well certainly, the kids that are in college today, and suffer the problems of the science department, are not beneficiaries of the changes that we're making to the science program right now. And so sometimes we say, you know, throw up our hands and discuss and say, "Oh, they got it." Science courses are falling apart around us. I think there's been a lot of progress being made, and I'm looking forward to the superintendent's report on that. I saw some progress even being made from the time my son was in school to the time my daughters -- my daughters just graduated, there was a two-year difference between them. And even in that period, there was -- there were changes already being made. And sometimes, you know, with education and any kind of results and data points, I remember when I started working marketing, we started looking at the Nielsen reports. And what we were always looking for was the data that was coming out in the next report, because by the time we looked at what we had freshly delivered from Nielsen, it was dated and old. And so I think this is part of what we're facing here, that, you know, even the stuff that's reported by the assistant superintendent tonight is going to be somewhat dated compared to what's going on in the classrooms today. I hope the gap isn't quite as big as some of those others. But I think, I think to be fair, we need to keep that context as part of our discussion and saying, "Okay, let's not sit hamming over what was. We have learned from that. Now let's take a look at what is, and is that meeting our needs?" And I think that's where some of the information that Dr. Orlando shared with us earlier this week, I think, was valuable in saying, "Okay." And I think that will talk to the kinds of things that the assistant superintendent Beck will be addressing tonight. What's happening today? And I think that's going to be a far more enlightened part of the conversation.
Well, I handed out the sheet. I know the board of school committee has put up with my endless handing out sheets and comments. I don't have a child in school, but 50 years of teaching has affected my personality.
So are we going to have to quiz on this topic?
Something like that. But I looked at the preschool article on page eight, that quotes, I think it is, yes, Mark Herbl's comment about young children's benefit from language and print-rich environment. And I don't know about science curriculum, that really is not my bailiwick, but I have become more and more convinced that the math content which is taught is just about a tenth of what kids can learn. But it has to start early. If we're starting in the high school, it's too late. Ages two to 10. Last time I didn't hand -- I handed out stuff, but I didn't say anything. But everything you read, whether it's in the Harvard magazine, or the New York Times, or Boston Globe, or wherever you go, start early, get them engaged. And to me, that is the most important thing we can do. I don't know how you do it in science, as I say, because that's not my area. But I do know, because I am currently working with somewhere between a dozen and 15 kids every week for an hour, and it only takes an hour to do a huge jump if you get right into it. And I'm concerned that it's -- that most of what kids are getting in school is math-like. And as I say in my little blurb here, sixth grade calculus is very doable, I've done it. Seventh grade, what did I say, German. I taught German to seventh graders, no, to fifth graders. I know that can be done. And writing English essays, those things can be done very early with huge benefit to the kids. And so I hope that we will be able to follow up on our superintendent's observation, start early, and have a rich environment. Thank you.
Actually, I'd like to follow up a little bit with Nick and also what you said in that I actually have seen some improvement myself. I guess I've seen it more at the middle school. And actually, there was some wonderful science. My kids were like in a test, which some teachers who were wonderful in science in elementary school. And so, but in the middle school, from my oldest to my youngest, it's -- there's been a big improvement, I think. And I would just like to see that carry on up. So, and I certainly understand that there's a lag. In terms of what kids are capable of, I agree with you. I just wonder if every kid is capable of, and I guess that's been something that has frustrated me at the low -- at the lower levels, is kids who, I mean, it's hard to tailor the curriculum to everybody's different abilities. And I know in this district, we have everybody in the same classroom, but maybe more breakouts or a way of the...
One of the first discussions I remember having in the report education was altogether two many years back, when I was on the school council at the Brown School, my first year at the Brown School. And we got into a big discussion with the superintendent at that point in time over, I guess, what you may call magnet programs or pilot programs that are striving for excellence in a particular point of a particular subject matter. And if Mara here does come to talk to us, and I think that's something that perhaps we should think about again, revisit, talk about as we look forward, and maybe she, I don't know. I'm sure she'll have very good points of view on that as to why we should or we shouldn't at the lower, at the early childhood education period. But I think that's something that probably needs to be thought about across all our schools. What are we doing to be, to truly have that point of difference that will make us, you know, take us from good to better to excellent? Where is that level of excellence, and how do we strive for that? And it might be to develop and disseminate some of those pockets of excellence. AP programs at the high school, should we should be then? I'm not sure they are today in some subjects. I agree with you on that. Because if they were, we would be seemingly consistently not only students wanting to take AP courses, but also doing well enough in the AP courses to get college credit for it.
The presentation that we're going to get tonight from the advisory group and the 990 group, the 990 hours, who has -- addresses some of these issues in terms of the numbers of electives, and also very clearly, and very emphatic about asking them to do that very clearly, identifies what resources they believe they're going to need in order to move us quickly back to 990 for majority, if not all, all kids in the schools. And this, I think, is the year where we're going to have to find those resources, we're going to have to restore some of those teachers at any time. We're just going to have to figure out how we're going to get that done, because that -- you can only contort the schedules so much, you can only enlarge classes so much to better add more teachers. And, you know, and I think this is the year when we really, really have to do that. It's very, very clear. It's clear to us in science, and it's clear to us just all across the board. You know, we had an opportunity to look at the presentation, and there are some very troubling things that we're hearing about what classes kids are going to wait for, which ones there are not enough sections of. And it's a pervasive enough problem that, you know, children's coming home, and so it's cutting back and out of the story, and it's got us here. I just want everybody to have a...
I would just like to respond to that a little bit in listening to everything that's been said so far. Today, I was working with some principals around starting to prepare their budgets. And one of the things that we're really thinking about this year is to develop your budget based on your programs, and think about it that way. So what are the programs that you have underway? What are all of the resources that are necessary for those programs to be fully successful? So, you know, human resources, all of the additional resources as well. And one of the things that came up was the very thing that Bruce is talking about, is we have cut, and we have cut, and we have cut, and we're at a point where we just cannot cut anymore. We have to start adding, because when we're talking about addressing the needs of all of our students on all, both ends of the continuum, you know, we're looking at how we enrich education for our students that are very high-achieving, and how we support the education of our students that are struggling, that requires more staff, it requires more people to address the needs of all of our learners. So I think that's a really good point. I think it's caught up with this. You know, we've reached the point where we have to do something about it if we want to make progress and move forward. It's not the only solution, but I think it's one that we can't ignore.
I'd like to take this opportunity to speak to the school committee members who are here. You know, I call it like I see it. Last week, we had a very interesting group here, or two weeks ago. I think you all who have come to school committee meetings year after year after year would have realized the fact that at the public conversation period, there were probably more people in this room than we've ever seen before, other than perhaps teachers who had come to make presentations. And that was to talk about science. And so you need to take a -- make that observation. The second thing that we see as community members is, I'll give you an example. We spent four weeks ago 20 to 25 minutes discussing an Hawaii trip that would have benefited five to seven pupils at Newburyport High School. Yet, we don't see any item on here that indicates we're going to rediscuss that. Now, Mr. DeCantor may be correct, and there are changes that are occurring now. Sounds like he knows some that are going to be reported tonight. I think you need to put critical items on the agenda that you believe are critical on a regular basis. I've had three phone calls tonight from parents who asked me why they should come here, because they saw no opportunity to discuss that issue. People look at the agenda, whether you believe it or not. There's another topic that becomes very concerning to me, that I believe you as school committee members need to put on this agenda on a regular basis. And that's the report of the fact that in the last semester, there have been 10 reported expulsion hearings at the high school on drug abuse. That's a tenfold increase over what it was last year. Now, you may have the answer, it may very well be we've got a new sheriff in town and we're looking at it more critically. But it's a critical issue that the public sees when they read the local newspaper. And yet, I have not seen it discussed here as a regularly occurring agenda item at school committee. Those are the types of things that I think we need to put in here, so that people can feel that they're engaged and able to hear a discussion of policies and principles that exist in our school districts, and there are many more. These are two that are very critical to me. Because people look at what you talk about, and people look at what you print. And so we need to make an attempt at publicizing this stuff. Two weeks ago, we had a very interesting conversation here, did we not? Was it videotaped?
I assume it was. Public conversation is taped. It wasn't?
It is tonight. Can I ask you why?
Why it wasn't?
Why it wasn't? Those are the questions that you as school committee members need to ask. I'm talking to school committee members right now, and please don't misconstrue me. Because I believe, as Mr. Warren has stated time and time again here, it's really about how to get them engaged, whether you're talking about students, parents, teachers, or principals. And you as school committee members have that obligation as elected officials above and beyond anyone else. And that's what I've challenged each and every one of you to do at these meetings.
If I could respond to just a couple of the things that you said, Ralph. One is that I haven't found it prudent to rely on the local newspaper to sort of get an accurate sense of what's happening.
It's true.
There have not been 10 expulsion here.
I've sat on the high school council, sir, it's been said there.
My understanding is that there have been two expulsion hearings.
I believe you're incorrect. So the challenge to you as a vice chair is to get the information, to get the facts.
The other thing that I wanted to say was that we spent probably the better part of, what, 30 minutes at our joint education meeting, which took place before this, with members of the city council discussing this issue. We did discuss this issue. We have raised a number of questions. It is very concerning. There is data that is going to come out from the youth risk survey, that usually comes out annually, will be out in January, that may help us understand what's going on. But these issues are having an impact on the culture.
I want you to understand, people would like to hear those things discussed here at school committee meetings. And you control the agenda.
Two weeks ago, we had a conversation here about science. And some of the science teachers asked to be here and be part of the public conversation. And we took a risk. And the risk is, we don't want to position our teachers. And we took a risk that we wanted, that they would be treated respectfully and with dignity. And so should we tape it? It was a public conversation. When you have a few people that are putting themselves forward, show a lot of courage, I don't necessarily think that we have to tape that. So therefore, we didn't do it last year in courtesy to those who we asked to come to the discussion. I'll take full responsibility for that. I have no problem with it. No problem, I'll take full responsibility. Okay? But we asked our teachers to come here and to talk about their practice, and that we must make sure that we treat them with respect and dignity. And so in courtesy to them, we should have taken this. I don't, right? So I take full responsibility.
And they were treated with full courtesy and respect.
That's right.
And you know, if I can just respond to that, in meeting with the science teachers after the last public conversation, I was concerned about the same things Dr. Herbl was, just because our work was underway, we had started the work, the concerns of the community truly have been heard, and there was some momentum going in the department. And you want to keep that momentum going. You want people on board and invested in the process. And so, you know, it was a risk for them to come, because you never know, there could have been people who weren't going to be respectful. And it's hard to have people critique your practice in a public setting. So, but as a result of the meeting, when I met with them as a follow-up to talk about what had taken place here, everyone felt that it was an important meeting, that were things said that needed to be said. Matter of fact, one of the teachers said, "I would label the evening a success," because it gave us even better direction about where we need to move, how we need to go forward. So, you know, I know people sat a little quiet that evening, because I think they worried a little less about what the evening was going to hold. And what, everybody comes to a meeting like that with their own set of expectations too. And you can't read people's minds knowing what everybody accepts from the people who are participating. But they walked away feeling positive, and not positive about what they had heard from the concerns, but positive in understanding what kinds of changes need to take place.
It is 7:00, we are currently live. I just want to say, I'm speaking to school committee members. Please understand that that was the preface to my conversation here this evening. It had nothing to do with teachers. I'm speaking to you.
Understood, understood. We will begin our school committee meeting. There are some changes to the agenda that moved some of that information about what's happening in science much earlier.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for Monday, December 5th, 2011. Mrs. Kennedy, would you kindly call the roll?
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney?
Present.
Mr. Mannan?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Ms. Weaver's absent.
Mr. DeCantor?
Present.
Mr. Keon?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. Kennedy, could we stand to recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public schools of justice, one nation, and one God, and to the civil, political, and religious institutions.
Thank you.
Before we open with a public comment, I would like to -- oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant...
The Newburyport mission statement. The Newburyport Public Schools are committed to the intellectual, physical, social development and engagement of every student. Within a culture of high expectations for individual and group learning, our students experience rigorous academic challenge, are intellectually curious, and express themselves creatively. Our students enhance their well-being by applying knowledge and skills about nutrition, fitness, and healthy behaviors. Our schools are an inclusive and supportive community. As part of this community, our students demonstrate values of personal integrity, sensitivity, and social responsibility. Our schools partner with parents and community in significant ways to help achieve their mission. Members of our school community, teachers, parents, staff, and administration, support this mission every day, in every classroom, on every field of play, and in every activity. You're welcome.
Before we begin our period of public comment, I would like to point out some changes that we are going to have to the agenda. Agenda was posted last week, and as a result, some of these changes haven't been put in. We will be moving the superintendent's report and the assistant superintendent's report, item 12 and 13, to occur after item 6. It will be occurring earlier in the meeting. Item number 8, Special Education Ad-Hoc Committee Report, has been put off until December 19th. Late in the week, we got some information from DESE, some findings that we wanted to really analyze, get back to the ad hoc group to talk about, and incorporate them into the report that will occur on 19th. That having been said, if I could open up for a period of public comment? Is anybody in the audience? Who would like to share anything? Now's the opportunity to do that. There'll be another period of public comment later in the meeting. Is there none? We could move to the consent agenda, do we have a set of votes?
Yes, we do. I moved up the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools, amounting in the aggregate to $5,566.71. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Note, Madam, Mr. DeCantor absent.
I note that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools, amounting in the aggregate to $201,307.65. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second. Any discussion? Is there none? All in favor?
Aye.
First. Note, Madam, Mr. DeCantor absent.
Thank you.
We have a set of minutes. Minutes of Monday, November 21st.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion, additions, amendments? Done, is there any? You're done? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Madam's passed, we're going to absent. Alex.
Hi.
Sweet breath.
It's nice to be back, Miss Blossom.
Glad to be back.
So fall sports have over, are over, and winter sports have begun. And the sophomore semi-formal is a week and a half away, and all the sophomores are very excited. Fortunately, I couldn't get a date, so I'm not going. So...
Is that a public place?
I'm ready to put that guy on campus.
Second, go in the minutes.
Yeah.
Sophomore girl, you heard it here.
Alex needs a date.
Exactly.
Sorry, Alex.
It's okay. But I mean, everyone always likes to go to the Hall of Fame. So and then earlier this week, there was a Youth for Youth Forum organized... So, and then earlier this week, there was a Youth for Youth Forum organized by Cyrus Woodman, Dylan Coy, and Connor Gravel. Dr. Kerbel and Mayor Holliday, you were both there. And I thought it was a real, I, students in the city talked about issues that were important to them throughout the meeting. I thought it was really well done, and I hope that something similar happens down in the near future. And finally, college deadlines and early notifications are beginning to come in, and all of the seniors are appropriately stressed out about it. And hopefully, by this time next meeting, most of them will find some college somewhere that will accept them. So, that's it for today.
Thank you, Alex. So if I, if I could just add a comment, I was also at the event sitting in the audience, and I thought the students did a terrific job. There was a very wide range of issues discussed, from the, from the marijuana, bill that the city council was talking about right on through the schools, I thought it was just beautiful, so I really appreciate it. Alex, good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
Great. Thank you. Any students?
I'll stick around for a little bit.
Again, because the item, the agenda has been changed, we're going to move to the superintendent's report and then the two assistant superintendent's reports.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate all the teachers being here tonight. No excuses being tired tomorrow, but thank you all for being here. And I also wanted to echo what Alex said about who speaks out, who you. Well done. Alex does a lot of tough questions that he asked the panel. Thanks to you, but Alex, also thanks to Cyrus and Dylan for being the margaritas. And I like the, the form spring is a way to ask questions of the panel. I also thought it was, I thought it was terrific, and I'd like to see more opportunities for you to speak out. I want to acknowledge Stremm Chemical. Stremm Chemical won the Parsons Award for, from the Society of Chemical Manufacturing Affiliates, and it's the, it's called the Sokmar Chemical Education Foundation. It's a $2,500 award that Mike Stremm will donate to the Newburyport Schools, and we're going to use that towards our science program. Want to recognize Eggardiano for being a, I hope I have this right, Division III Coach of the Year in Football. So congratulations to Coach Ed. And I just want to mention something about what people don't know about coaching football, especially when you're the head coach. It's not, you don't start in September and end at Thanksgiving. What happens is that during the summer, you are, you are unpacking the boxes, right? And I caught Coach Ed unpacking the belts one day, at that school committee meeting, I looked over, and there he was, unpacking the helmets and the belts, and that was early during the summer. And what you don't see will be all the contacts that Coach Ed will make on behalf of seniors to nearby, I mean, to, to colleges. And so, he'll write recommendations, he'll send out game films. The other thing, and this is the last thing I'll say about Coach Ed, it takes an unselfish person to donate and dedicate yourself year after year, knowing that, yes, yes, you do get a stipend for coaching, but the hourly rate is minimum wage. And that's a lot of time to be away from your family. And so, and what you don't realize is Coach Ed watches a lot of game films night after night so that he can prepare players. And so, he, he has developed relationships with all of the students on his team, as well as all the coaches. And so, just want to recognize Coach Ed, and I'd like to see a round of applause for him for the. So, I just want, I, I have a list, and I'll go through them quickly, a list of the fall sports and the, the students that certainly made the All-Star teams. And so, congratulations to the football team for being Division III A semifinalists. They were Division III champions for the Cal League. Boys soccer qualified for the state tournament for the first time in four years. Adam Traxler, Nate Northley, and A.J. McDowell made the All-Star team. Adam made the All-League team. Girls soccer, Division II North champions. And All-League was Hannah Martin and J.C. Tryandafalu. Did I say that right?
Tryandefilo.
Okay. Thank you. Jackie Cruzmark is All-Star. Megan Corbett and Ali Leahy were All-Stars. In field hockey, they were the Cal Division I champions, and they received the Cal Team of Sports Award. All-League, Paige Hefferman and Molly Rowe were All-Leagues. And Kelsey Crowley, Kate McGarly, and Madison Stanton were All-Stars. Boys cross country, Cal Division I champions. They were undefeated in dual meets. Division Four East Bass champions. Just want, just want to mention about cross country. If you fall across country, it's, it can be a lonely sport. A lot of dedication, I think, for students. They know they may run in packs, but lots of times, they run alone. Qualified for the All-Star meet, the fall state meet, was Chris Hugood. He was All-League. Keith Crowley, All-League. Nick Calio, All-League. And Joe Santo, All-League. Girls cross country, Cal Team Sportsmanship Award qualified for the All-Star meet. And in golf, maybe All-League, golf, I'm sorry, Cam Caldwell, maybe All-League. Congratulations to all of our athletes for the fall, and also all of the students who participated in clubs and in theater around the school. Right? That's it. Thank you.
Kerbel, there were some football players who also made the. Make sure I mention, I don't know if you don't have that, that was published today.
I didn't have that.
Check out the Daily News today if you don't know who they are. They deserve your recognition as well.
I'll recognize them next time. Thank you. Brings my attention.
Assistant Superintendent, do we flip a coin here or a draw?
Sure. My main budget update is in MSBA, but certainly just to provide you with information regarding budget, budget development. We're in full throes of budget and budget development, particularly at the building level with principals. As I've mentioned to you, they've got their, what we refer to as G-Form budget developed forms, that they're working with their teachers, their staffs, their department on understanding exactly what goals and objectives they have for next years in regards to budget development. We're also working with the salary projections as far as having negotiated contracts for both NTA and APSME so that we can project those costs much more efficiently than we have been able to in the past since we've had one-year contracts. So that work is going on as we speak, and I will continue to keep you updated as far as that's concerned.
Anybody have any questions? Angela, yours.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start with the update for the science department because I think people are anxious to hear a little bit about that. I'm going to give you an overview of some of the work that's transpired just between the public conversation meeting that we had two weeks ago to date. So, I'm going to start with some foundational work. One of the first things that we did in trying to work through this problem was to create a theory of action. You know, a theory of action is when you make one, an if-then kind of statement about something, and it gives you the foundation that you're going to work from. So in this situation, the theory of action that was developed is, if the, if Newburyport High School Science Department incorporates high standards for best instructional practices in pacing, rigor, labs, projects, homework, and assessments, then the students will receive an exemplary science education that prepares them for college and career. So that's our premise. That's where we're going. The strategic objectives associated with that are to provide support to the teachers and the resources needed to implement standards of best instructional practice throughout the science department, and to monitor progress to ensure consistency and continuity of curriculum and instruction. So there's our foundation that we're working from. From that, we're in the process now, Rob Yeomanz, the department chair, Michael Perrin, the principal, and myself, in developing the pieces of that and how it's all going to work throughout this process that we're working through. So we've identified the focus areas that will be focused, that we're going to work on one at a time, and then when we will tackle those, how we're going to tackle them, and what our anticipated results will be from that. And I'll provide you a copy of all of that once that chart is completed. So, but I just want you to understand how the foundation is being built for the work. From there, we have been meeting weekly to work on this. If you don't mind, Mr. Cole, Steve Cole sent an email to me today and really talked about the importance of tackling the improvements in a balanced way. And I completely agree with him around this. So many of the things that we're talking about in the science department, we're also talking about across the board at the high school because we want to ensure solid practices everywhere. So we've spent some time looking at curriculum maps and talking about the work that needs to be done as we map our curriculum, and aligning our curriculum with any curriculum guides, and aligning those guides with the syllabus that we use on a regular basis, and then trying to ensure that all of that matches what's happening in the classroom as we work through that. So we're meeting much more frequently. As we met this week, what we did is we took the schedule that the people who were involved in organizing all the NIASC work at the high school and the administration from the high school have put together, identifying any times that would be allotted for curriculum work as well as NIASC preparation work. And so we went through that today, this week as a group, and we talked about, we identified all the times that are available for us to work that will be scheduled in, and then started to key in on some of the focus areas we've identified that will need additional time. And we've started to schedule that so that we can work through the process that way. We're also in the, our conversations this week focused around a proposal that was put together by Mr. Perrin and I, based on the workshop time that we've spent with the science department. When we've been, when we spent the three-hour workshop a few weeks ago, there was a lot of brainstorming that took place. We focused on many of the areas that were outlawed in the theory of action. Of all the, what our practices are, what our current practices are, where we want to go with our practices. And so, we were figuring that out, and we were figuring out the first thing that we were trying to do, that we've done around best instructional practices in the area of science. And so, what I did was just key in on some of the most important aspects of that, so it wasn't too lengthy, it was just kind of a reminder of all of the work that we've talked about, and then put forth a proposal that talked about setting some standards around frequency and purpose of homework, around formative assessments, how many formative assessments we might see in a unit, summative assessments, the amount of time, general time span that a unit should take if we're looking at a college prep class or an elective course versus an honors class or an AP class. We talked about, and then we spent majority of our time talking about labs and the amount of time that should be, what kind of standard we need to set for the frequency and purpose of lab experiences for the students. We had very rich conversation around the kind of lab experiences that are currently taking place, what kind of lab experiences we want to expand for our students. And in that conversation, we really focused on what the students are doing during that time. We, all of the teachers have been given the position paper by the, that Dr. Orlando actually forwarded, that was written by the National Science Teacher Association. And it's their position on teaching laboratory studies in science education. And so, we're going to work further from that this week. Rob Yeomanz is working with the department again on Wednesday. I think that we're coming close to an agreement about what we can all do as far as labs go in our high school science programs. I think everybody is aware that we need to increase the amount of labs we're doing, but they need to be good labs too. They need to be directly associated with the learning that's taking place, so they're offering an inquiry-based or experiential component to the learning that's underway. So we've had some very rich discussions around that. We've talked about other ways that we might approach instruction that would free us up for a little more time for lab instruction. So, you know, even things like brainstorming, would it be possible to, you know, tape a lecture, put an extra slide, if it's a science session, class, we'd be prepared to go into a more hands-on experience around that topic. So, a lot of really good discussion, a lot of people thinking about 21st century learning, where we're headed in the future, and how we might be able to offer those kinds of opportunities to our students. The teachers also asked if it was possible to, to go on some site visits, districts that we might like to emulate and that have exemplary practices in place. And we discussed that certainly as a possibility, developing rubrics around that so that when they go, we're looking for very specific things that we'd like to improve here in Newburyport, and have them come back and talk about what they observed and how those practices might be applicable here. We have also been researching people outside of our district who might be able to support us in our efforts on a consulting basis. So that discussion is also underway. That's something that Rob Yeomanz, Rob Yeomanz and I will be working on this Wednesday. He and I are meeting in the morning to prepare for the meeting that he's going to have with the department in the afternoon, continuing the work that's underway. So, that's a kind of a general update of the things that are happening. I think that, you know, one of the things that's really been the focus of our conversation is that we really want to work towards consistency. And we had a lot of discussion around, that doesn't mean that everybody has to act like robots and be in lockstep with everybody else. What it does mean is that we've built some learning standards for our students that we're making a commitment to be consistent in reaching, and that we are building consistency in our practices in the classroom.
Anybody have any questions?
Angela, I found the banners that you were proposing to put together particularly interesting. And I know that people out there who are in our audience and are watching it on TV probably don't have the benefit of looking at this chart and seeing what some of the recommendations are. Could you go through some of these recommendations just so the people know what it is that we're talking about, particularly highlighting the differences between the college prep courses and the honors and AP courses?
Yes. Before I do, I just want everybody to understand this is in a proposal stage, so it's a draft, so I just don't want anybody to walk away saying, "Oh, this is what's going to happen." Absolutely, because we're still working through the process. So, some of the things that were proposed were, if we're looking at a college prep or elective class in science, that, you know, homework will be given, and these are minimal standards, so two to three times a week, formative assessments would be given three to six times in a unit, lab experiences would be three to four in a unit, summative assessments there would be at least one, and that the unit would take anywhere between four to six weeks. Now remember, you know, we're talking span, so depending on what the unit of study is, some units four to six weeks will be fine, other units that may be too much time. So, but we're just trying to set some kind of framework for consistency. As we look at honors, we're trying to identify five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, The assessment is five, the unit lab experience is four. Week, formative assessments, still at three to five times per unit. But as far as lab experiences go and how the timing of a unit, there are national standards set for AP classes. And so what we're looking at are those national standards and that our AP classes should be meeting those national standards. So, and like I said, none of this is set in stone, yet that's why we didn't publicize it, we've put it out to everybody at this point because this is a work in progress. It's a proposal at this point. But it gives us a place to start. You know, when you do a workshop where you spend half of a day brainstorming all of these components and looking at what we know about best practices and looking at what we're currently doing, looking at where we want to go. We go off to a, you know, sheets and sheets of chart paper from walls. And so what we did is we just synthesized some of that information and put it together as a place for us to start setting this standard.
Any other questions? Great. Do you, do you have any idea of what kind of obstacles you're going to be facing, such as resources, personnel, planning time, things like that? I mean, any significant ones you'd want to?
Well, we do, I can tell you some of the things that we discussed this week as we talked about labs specifically. At Newburyport High School, the teachers share lab space. So we talked about ways that we might be able to plan better and have labs ready to run repetitively throughout a day. So when you share a lab space, as you all know, anybody who's done a lab, there's prep time, there's cleanup time to be successful in what's going to happen in a lab. That can be an obstacle. Sometimes you lose time in trying to make that happen. We talked about the schedule, you know, even though the schedule has changed and now science teachers see students, you know, more frequently, the period of time is shorter. And so sometimes labs have to be split over multiple days because if you're going to do a really comprehensive lab, the amount of time that you have in one class period is not enough. So how do you do that effectively? If, if we're going to try to stay fairly consistent in the way we're delivering the curriculum, teachers are going to be pretty close to one another and need the labs at the same times. So how we're going to work that out logistically? We've got, talking about how we could free up more class time to allow for more hands-on time. Really good discussions about being able to differentiate the instruction and the importance of being able to offer a variety of learning experiences to students in science instruction. And time is often a limitation to that. I think that the teachers felt like they've got time to collaborate and they're in a good situation at the high school to do that, even the way their offices are located and classrooms are located. But there's never enough collaboration time. So that was one of the things that we wanted to look at when we go on site visits, how are other people managing the lab time? You know, because there were, teachers came to this conversation, talked citing some other districts that they're familiar with and the way that they're approaching science instruction to be able to accomplish all that you, that you want to get at.
Great, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
I did have one question as well. I know that a lot of our energy has been concentrated on the high school. Can you speak to how that is, how we're sort of looking at some of the other issues in some of the other grades?
Sure.
Around science?
Around science, okay, all right. I thank you for clarifying that. Around science, yes. I've had a conversation with our middle school principal, Ferry Hopping, around some of the work that we're doing at the high school. And, you know, teasingly, I said, and we're coming to the middle school next because I think it's really important that we're all on the same page and that our feeder program is aligned with the work that we're, we're doing at the high school. So Mr. Hopping has already shared that with the people who are teaching science at the middle school. And during their half-day, they started conversations around their lab work and started sharing their lab experiences, what their lab reports look like, the work they're doing in preparation for the high school experience that our students are having. So we will continue to work with the middle school teachers on alignment of their curriculum and their practices with the work that we're putting in place at the high school. I met last week with Mike Koski. And Mike Koski is the science consultant that we had working with our teachers' grades four and five last year for a portion of the year around teaching them more about, expanding their knowledge in science to start with. And then he did a lot of modeling for them last year around good inquiry-based science instruction. He's coming back, starting in January, and he's going to continue his work with our teachers at grades four and five around good science instruction. And this year, when he returns, he's really going to be focusing on coaching them during their science instruction. So he'll be available to co-plan with them, to co-teach with them, to continue to model for them, whatever they feel they need most to help them expand their ability to be a good science instructor. So we've got that in place. And then we are in discussions about how we move that down into our elementary school, into the Brezner Hand School. When we originally talked about this, we thought we might ask Mike to work with teachers at both the Brezner Hand and the Mullen School this year. And through discussion, we decided to stay more focused for now rather than go too wide. So that's where we are with our science conversations in the other areas.
Let's speak, what was his name?
Mike Koski.
Thank you.
I just want to add to your report.
Well, you know, I also just wanted to say, you know, the rest of the district had a really successful day during our release day, last Thursday. You know, you can't be everywhere. So our teacher leaders send us their agendas for the day of what they're going to be working on in their professional learning communities. And then they also send follow-up reflections about how the day went. They let us know if they need additional support, if they have additional questions. And really, there's just, really, there's great focused work underway in our district. I think, I would really invite you to come on a early release day if any of you can get away from your other lives and spend a little bit of time observing the work that's underway in all of our schools. Because we've got really dedicated teachers who are working very hard to ensure that they're offering the best that they can to their students. And we have various focus areas. We've got some people who are really looking at student work, looking at feedback to start making more informed decisions. We have other areas that are working specifically on literacy, others that are working specifically on math. At the high school, I had the opportunity to meet with all of the department chairs on last Thursday before we started our work with science and really talk about how we make, how we help the teachers, that the teacher leaders are facilitating, make connections between all of the work that we have underway in the district. Because sometimes it feels very overwhelming and it feels like new initiatives all the time. And some of our conversation really focused on how it's not really new, it's that we're progressing and we're moving into the next phase of our work in our curriculum, instruction, and assessment work. And to help everybody understand that and celebrate our achievements along the way so that it doesn't always feel like we're starting something new, so that we can say, we graduated from that and we're ready for the next phase of our work. So there's really wonderful things happening in the district and people are working very hard. And I'm, I'm very grateful for all the efforts that the teacher leaders put into that and all the efforts of the teachers that are working with them.
At the risk of lengthening this just a little bit, I would, I just wonder whether you or Mark would give us just a very quick summary of the place-based community meeting we had and we were going to that initiative?
Sure. Let me go.
You're on a roll.
I'm on a roll. Okay. Well, any of you, because you were all there. So any of you, please jump in at any time. But we did, we had a meeting, was it last week? Just last week? We had a meeting about place-based education and how we can support that in Newburyport to move us to the phase that we would ultimately like to get to, which I think is now like phase three. It started off at phase four, but now I think it's phase three. And that's to really bring this to a level where we'd be able to build a regional pace, a place-based education center here in Newburyport. And of course, when you're talking about a goal like that, it takes funding to make something like that happen. So we explored funding sources and Mayor Holliday had a lot of good suggestions around ways that we might approach that. We had really good conversation about how we could team and work collaboratively to put our strengths and our efforts together to move forward in that direction.
Thank you. Yep. You would mention a science consultant in the middle school. Do you feel there's any need for a science consultant in the high school?
Well, that's one of the things we're looking at. Some of the people that we're talking to, when I said we're researching how maybe someone on the outside might be able to support us in that effort. We have several people that we're in conversation with to really, we really want to interview these people and help them understand where we are in this process to see if they have something they can really contribute and bring to it. I know that there's been suggestion about bringing someone in to actually teach labs as we're moving through this transition process. I think it would be good to have someone who can help us, coach us through this transition process rather than take the process away from us. So we're in conversation about that right now.
Thank you, thank you very much for very comprehensive looking at what's been happening. The next item on the agenda is a presentation about the advisor. You guys wait back there. So the advisor-advisee, I know that, I know that Mike Parent had hoped to be here. He is dealing with a family situation and is not able to be here tonight. Yes, go ahead.
I want to introduce the Newburyport High School Advisor-Advisee Committee.
Thank you. Where are we?
I'll report out the progress of the committee's work, which is the advisor-advisee program and the 990 hours of structured learning time. So I want to introduce Michael Tester, his social principal, Matt LaChapelle, Wendy Crofts, Nicole Thumi, and Deborah Zabo. Am I missing someone?
No. Nicole couldn't be here tonight.
And I appreciate the work of the high school staff. Had opportunity to meet with them a few times and appreciate the bold thinking and their leadership and their constant smiles, which is good, you need that. That's all yours.
Thank you very much. Thanks everybody for coming tonight. I'm Matt LaChapelle, my colleagues Wendy Crofts and Deborah Zabo. Nicole Thumi is also part of our team. She's actually doing a joint venture with Massachamton High School, coaching the girls hockey. And today it was very early on the schedule and she wasn't able to. She has also worked with us. Basically, we have the Advisor-Advisee 99 Committee. Last summer, we were approached to be part of an effort to solve two big problems that we see, or two big challenges, as you said, that we see at the high school. One is that we were asked to figure out a way to implement an advisor-advisee program. That was requested by the NIASC. Last time they were here, it was one of the recommendations for us to have a viable advisor-advisee program. And our second charge was to ensure that every student at Newport High School fills the 100, I'm sorry, 100%, of them fill the 990 hours of structured learning time as defined by the DESD regulations. As of right now, 100% of our students, all of our students are not filling the exact 90. Some are, but many are not.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the Advisor-Advisee program. We, at the last NIASC visit that we had back in, I believe it was 2003, we were, it was recommended that we start this program and it's been a long time coming. Some of us have been on this committee for years. And we've done a lot of background research, visiting other schools, looking at other programs, just kind of seeing what other schools are doing, what works, what doesn't work, and foremost, what would best fit Newburyport High School and the needs of our students. And so what is the program? It's basically a program that provides students with an adult mentor from within the school community that they can go to whenever they have an issue or a problem. And fundamentally, this person, this mentor, will help to guide that student through the four years of high school. We have decided that it would be best to facilitate the program through grade level. And the reason why is because freshmen come in with a different set of issues as compared to sophomores who are maybe a little more familiar with the school. And then the juniors and seniors are certainly at a much different point in their lives. There are lots of benefits to this program. As you can see, it fulfills a NIASC recommendation. The idea with some of the programs that we've designed in the curriculum has some students going out into the community, working, say, in a nonprofit group or maybe volunteering other grade levels. They might have to conduct an internship of some sort and kind of get to know what there is out there in the wider world and so on. And so that promotes 21st century learning. And then ultimately, it also just provides students with a means to kind of engage themselves more fully within the school community itself. So how are we going to do this? We have a variety of activities planned. We're still in the planning stages, however, I can go into more detail. Each academic year is clearly defined. Okay, so the theme task, freshmen will come into Newburyport High School and basically they'll have a year called Transitions, where basically all freshmen will be asked to get involved. And because it's a mandatory program, they will be able to receive credit for time on learning. So they might be joining a club, such as Model Ewen. They might be, you know, getting involved in, say, a musical or a theater event. The sky's the limit in terms of what we offer, but we just basically want them to get involved so they can start feeling as if they're part of the larger community. Sophomores, we'd like them to look outside of Newburyport High School and start thinking about how they can give back. We have a wonderful community here and our students are infinitely talented and they have a lot that they can offer to the community. And so we want to build a program around community service. Juniors, at this point in time, they're all already thinking about what they want to do with life outside of high school. And so this is an opportunity for them to kind of explore who they are, their passions, and hopefully build some skills and maybe even some links to either places or people that could help them further their careers outside of NIASC. And seniors will basically be preparing for some sort of graduation exhibition, which will demonstrate the master of skills necessary for them to graduate from high school, which is another NIASC recommendation, that our students graduate by exhibition. As far as logistics, traditionally, advisor-advisee programs tend to be relatively small, between 12 to, say, 16 students or so. And so that would involve every staff member at the high school level having a small advisory, which they would follow for four years. So obviously, with a small group of the same students and one teacher, they get to be sort of like a family eventually, at least that's the ideal. In terms of ensuring that everybody gets the same materials and has the same expectations, we've been developing and are in the process we've been developing and are in the process of still developing scripts that each advisor will have that they can follow for monthly meetings in order to have some sort of consistency. In order to oversee all of this, all four years, we need some means of oversight for each grade level because there's a lot of paperwork involved in terms of tracking hours and whatnot. And so we propose that there should be some sort of stipended position by grade level that pretty much knows that grade level's curriculum inside and out, as well as a lot of the students and obviously the teachers, and can help facilitate that. And lastly, we still have a lot of work to do, and we need to continue working for the next several months to prepare scripts, to do some more research for some of the other years. We have to get, kind of hit the pavement in terms of going out locally and talking to people who might want to be involved, whether it's businesses or nonprofit groups or whatnot. There's still a lot to be done.
So that's the fun part. That's the advisor-advisee aspect of it, which we're interested in, we're invested in, we're excited about. Somehow, through some back door, we ended up being in charge, not being in charge of, but another little charge that came upon our committee was the 990 issue. And we realized, well, if we're establishing some kind of advisor-advisee program, why not try to meet the 990? However, that is not our purpose. So we just wanted to make it really clear that the goal of the advisor-advisee program is not to meet 990. Yes, we're so good that we will probably figure out how to do that through the program, but that's not its primary purpose, nor is it necessarily the best way to meet 990. But it is a way to meet 990. It may be a temporary way to meet 990, and, but there may be even a better way to make us move from great to greater, in the immortal words of Hardley. So here's the problem. Right now, 30% of our students meet 990. Those are students who have no study halls. They have seven classes, they're all classes, no study halls, seven classes, half, first half of the year, and seven classes, second half of the year, no study halls at all. Many, many students will reach 970. 970 means they have one study hall, one semester, and a full load the second semester. So that's really the majority of our students. We thought we'd be really clever. We thought, hey, this isn't really going to be a hard problem to solve because a lot of our students do a lot. I mean, like Alex, he's gone now, but I would like to think that the past couple hours were a learning experience for Alex. He's doing that, we've got kids in theater and band, we've got kids doing all kinds of stuff. So we thought, wow, this is going to be like easy. All we have to do is keep track of the extra hours that kids put in. 20 hours, piece of cake. Unfortunately, that was the idea. We listed things, band, poetry soup, Model U N, lots of things they do. One small problem, it's against the law. So there's the law.
Well, that's insubstantial.
It's a small problem, but one that we felt we needed to acknowledge. We have a list, and you know, you all, most of you, I think, have copies of it. There are a bunch of things that are included, and then there are a bunch of things that are not included. But the one I'd call your attention to, and we could have a great educational philosophical discussion about this, but the very last line says, participating in optional school programs does not count. So if a student is doing something that they just love to do, and they happen to be learning from doing it, that's very nice, but that does not count as time on learning. Personally, I don't understand that philosophically, but that's okay. So there we are. We can't use those extra things. We have to look at something else.
We see a number of reasons for the 990 problems at NHS in terms of not meeting the hours. Basically, what we view as a problem are a few things. One thing is our high school schedule, which I'll go into in just one second. Another problem, our current elective offerings. And thirdly, enrollment of students in non-directed study halls. Students cannot achieve time on learning hours in a non-directed study hall. So as of now, they can use a non-directed study hall for making up classwork, or studying, or getting extra help from a teacher or a friend or whatnot, but they're not achieving academic credit for that non-directed study hall. Now, our current schedule, the new schedule that we have, we have found limits things in a variety of ways. Essentially, the number of courses that a student can take per semester is limited by this current schedule compared to what we had prior. We moved from an eight-period schedule to a seven-period schedule. Yes, we meet more often, but we moved from eight periods to seven periods, giving less opportunity for them to take classes. Students also, in terms of their access to courses, many of the courses that we offer are singleton courses. For example, I teach, I'm a social studies teacher, I teach citizen government economics. My economics class runs once per semester, just as an example. The class used to close, meaning that it was 25 to 30 kids trying to get into this class, and they would actually close it down because it was a very popular course. Now, my course is about 15 kids or so, not because it's a lack of interest, but because my course runs at the same time as another core class that the students must take, whether it's a math requirement, a science requirement, an English requirement, whatever it is, they can't take my economics class, even though they might want to. And there are many courses that are run in this singleton fashion, where the students might love to take the class, but they're limited because of the single offering. Also, students' accessibility to teachers and vice versa. Students do not have the extra time in the day to meet with teachers. Teachers don't have the time in the day to meet with students. Our school day ends around 2:30 now. And students who have activities or drop after school, they didn't be there by 3:00, between going to their locker, between getting their jacket, between bumping into a friend in the hallway, there's absolutely no extra time for the kids to meet with us prior to doing their after-school commitments. So the current schedule does limit us. We have data illustrating this. Essentially, this October, we worked on a survey. We compiled a survey of a number of things in an effort to gather some data. We sent our survey out to parents at large via school-wide email. We had 149 parents respond to our survey. We also did, had asked students to take classes, the history classes as a vehicle for that, and we had 375 students respond to our survey. To illustrate the fact that our current schedule limits the amount of classes students take or their choices, parents cited 26 different classes on our survey that the children were unable to take. Students cited 39 different classes that they were unable to take. And this was not just 39 students saying they couldn't take classes, it's 39 classes that students could not take, with numerous students responding to the same classes. Most of these courses were electives. There were those, some core courses that students couldn't get into because of limitations in the schedule. Courses most often decided as inaccessible, and these are in alphabetical order, but these are the courses that kids could not get into because of the schedule. I won't read them to you, but you can see a number of courses the kids could take. And there is a language requirement, some kids couldn't get into basic Spanish, and there was more than one instance of this. Other courses that kids cited were as follows. We offered these electives. These are classes that are currently being taught at NHS that students can't access because of limitations in the scheduling process. And you'll notice that it runs the gambit of skill level. There's intro classes all the way up to your AP class that kids can't get into, through a variety of different disciplines.
The second reason that students are not currently meeting 990 has to do with the current slate of electives. And on the survey that we sent out, we also had questions about electives. Both parents and students indicated various levels of satisfaction with regard to what we currently offer. 54% of parents mentioned that they were only somewhat satisfied with the schedule, and 36% noted they were somewhat dissatisfied or not satisfied at all. 28% of students responded, cited that they were satisfied, while 33% cited they were not. The most interesting finding was that some students indicated they hadn't really thought about the schedule and their electives all that much, and we were kind of thinking in terms of the advisory program. That might be a place where we could actually talk about what are the benefits of, you know, taking a well-rounded schedule of classes and how to do it, how best to do it. And the third reason that students are not currently meeting 990 just has to do with the fact that the way that study halls are run currently, it's not in the format of a directed study. And so currently, they can't receive hours for learning as it is.
So you're probably all waiting to hear the solutions that we came up with to these problems. Solution one is to create a schedule that can meet some of these needs and address some of these needs. You know, we're concerned about students bolstering their academic resumes, they're not going to look as competitive as students in other systems if they cannot take these courses. And I'd like to think that there should be some joy in their learning, and they should be able to take the courses they just want to take because it can be a lot of fun to learn. Students need time to meet with their classroom teachers for extra help and guidance. We mentioned that before, and if, one of our important missions is to help kids get more independent, but in order to become more independent, you know, if, I mean, maybe if we were birds, we could just kick them out of the nest and they'd fly, but they really do need some guidance from us. Sometimes it's just something like, which of these two college essays should I send? Or should I apply for this job or that job? It's just a quick question that they want to ask us, and they literally have to run after us in the hallway. So it would be great if them to do that. And the last thing is for teachers to have the time to collaborate, reflect, and commonly plan courses, so that a schedule that would not only help us meet the 990, but as long as we have to meet the 990, we could actually use it to improve our instructional strategies, our collaborative time, and everything that's really important to educate our students.
We also advocate for expanding our elective offerings by reinstating five of the 7.2 teachers that have been cut over the past several years. Of the 702 students enrolled at NHS, as we mentioned earlier, 30% currently at that 990. This is 491 students who need to add a class in order to meet that 990. If we were to add five additional full-time educators, this would provide 25 additional instructional periods. Now, the math behind this, if we were to assume an average of 20 students per class, times 25 new classes, this would give us 500 individual opportunities for students to enroll. 491 students currently are under-enrolled, so this math makes sense. In our survey, we listed, we listed a number of, a huge slate of potential electives that we could offer. We gathered the choices for the electives that we offered from student surveys done, I believe, two years ago, as well as soliciting information from current students, as well as opening up to faculty members to ask what they might think they would want. We had a slew of potential electives. In alphabetical order, the courses that the students and parents have cited as most interest are listed here. We are not advocating to add all these courses. We are simply saying that these are courses of interest from students and parents that we might conceivably add after we reflect upon it and see what kind of talent we have available and what sort of classes we want to see. But you'll notice out there, several of the classes that were asked for, work classes have been recently cut, notably band, French, and journalism, which also runs the masthead student newspaper at high school, which you don't ever have.
And the final solution, not making any sort of, I'm not going to say that, final solution to my end problem is essentially to implement true directed study programs that would follow, like the recommendations of the DESE. We would continue to run academic support and learning labs, which are beneficial to students, and we would encourage students to fully enroll in what we currently have to maximize their learning while at Newport High School.
Okay, so this is the longer way than, you can tell we really sort of got into this.
Sorry.
Oh, Wendy. Okay, okay. Here we go. Outcomes and visions. So we, we're very optimistic, this particular group of people I'm working with, but we think that we can have a program ready for review by April of 2012 and ready to employ it in September. It probably won't be perfect, given that it took us four months to do this PowerPoint perfectly the way we liked it, but we could have, we think we can have a viable program. We believe that all students can exceed 990 through a diverse and engaging program of studies. Additional teaching staff will make the expansion of course offerings possible. And there was a mandate by the MOU negotiated in our contract, which stipulated that a scheduling, a schedule committee, a schedule committee would be formed, and, you know, that committee is going to have to figure out, their charge will be to find a expansive 21st century school schedule that we hope could be ready for approval by April 2012 and ready for implementation in September. And there's our timeline.
We know this is ambitious, but we feel very strongly as these to move forward. It's been a long time coming that things haven't moved forward on this, and we do want to see our goals reached, and we're willing to work towards that. Our timeline is as follows, December 5th, which is tonight, we are presenting to you. The way we see the process moving forward, early December, we'd like to have a schedule committee formed. As of right now, the schedule committee is beginning to take shape. We hope to have it formed very, very soon. Through December through March, Anoch, which is our committee, is going to collaborate with the schedule committee, and we will also create the advisor-advisee program. We are taking responsibility, we will have it done by our charge of April. March, we review the schedule committee, able and ready to present a new proposed schedule to the faculty, whose support is needed, and to the school committee. March and April, we will begin, we will continue to work with the schedule committee in order to continue to collaborate, tweak our programs to ensure a smooth transition to process. April 9th, we will be done, the advisor-advisee program, our scripts will be written, and it will be ready for implementation. In late April, we will, we and the school committee will be prepared to make our final presentations to the school committee for the approval of our programs to be ready next year. That's our plan.
Can you talk a little bit about what you've done to inform your colleagues of this great venture?
Well, other than the casual conversations of one month that we've had, we had a full presentation to the staff in September. Second staff meeting, and we had the full staff available to us. We presented a program to them very similar to one you just gave, and we asked them for comments, both constructive feedback and also other thoughts that they might have. And I personally received a positive feedback.
Be thankful, you got the short version.
I'm sure, I just, are you supported by your colleagues at the high school?
We have an amazing, amazing group of people at the high school. And by and large, the staff here wants what is best for the kids. For a long time coming, many, many, many of us have felt this advisor-advisee program is absolutely what's best for the kids. The 990 is state mandated, we're all supportive of that, and from what I've seen from my colleagues, I'm confident that we can support our program.
Any questions? Just a comment, fantastic presentation. This makes me feel very proud, that we are finally really get grabbing this bomb by the horns, and I hope that your schedule committee involves some science people.
Yeah. The courses that you had students identify as courses that they felt like they were unable to take, is it possible, or have you already done this, the current roster, and I don't think they're all reflected here because I don't see 39 here, but is it? because I don't see 39 here, but is there any sense of how many empty seats essentially are in those courses right now?
We do have some courses that would have room to have students in, but we also have some courses that are very, very large. Some teachers have student loads of upwards of 125, 130 kids, whereas some are not. And it isn't due to a lack of interest in the class that students have, that kids can't put in the seats.
And that's what I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to equate, equate your math earlier about adding sections, which would essentially avail, you know, more seats for kids to learn. As to how many seats right now are vacant, that we're essentially wasting resources. With the understanding that, and I didn't want to hear that, that there are some classes that are just unavailable because so many people want to sign up for them and likely because there's not other options, you know, which, you know, which make those courses that much more difficult to deliver the knowledge you'd like to deliver to a larger, large group like that. Thank you.
I have two questions. A presentation this long is comprehensive. I'm glad I came up with these two questions. My brain is still functioning. The first is, can you clarify for me? You talked about the grade level curriculum and the Advisor-Advisy Program, which I think is a great idea. And you talked about teachers gaining expertise at that grade level. But then you also talked about continuity and the Advisory-Advisy would stick with a certain set of students through the four years. So I'm assuming it's a four-year cycle that they go through. Is there a conflict, or how do you achieve that level of expertise in the curriculum and also achieve the continuity that you're looking for? That was a disconnect that I saw a little bit in the presentation. I'd like you to comment on that. And the other one that I'd like you to comment on a little bit further, if you will, is how the changes that you're proposing to the 990 program will allow for more time for extra help between teachers and students? If that wasn't clear to you.
Well, with regard to the Advisor-Advisy Program in terms of continuity across the four years, that's something that we really have to look into at this point. We have scripts for freshman year curriculum that could be implemented, that has already been designed. As far as sophomore and junior year, that work still needs to be done. We really need to hit the pavement and research that. And senior year, there has been work done on the senior exhibition. So we do have to fill in some of the gaps and then see how everything fits together as to whether or not, ideally, it would be nice to have that one teacher be that mentor for four years just to see the growth of the student. But how to do that is still something that we really need to talk about and work out and hopefully work with you all too as well and the community at large to see how it could really transpire.
In terms of your second question, a couple of things with that. In terms of allowing more time for students to meet with teachers. One thing currently with the new schedule, in order to meet the 990, in order to structure our schedule the way that we did it, we did expand the school day to 30. Doing that, prior to this, we got up by past 2:00. That's 20 minutes, 25 minutes that students could have been spent with us prior to starting at free club, prior to the drop site at free club, where they could have spent many of us. Also, our schedule, one, well, I say our schedule, we haven't designed the schedule yet. We would hope that by having the Advisor-Advisy take pressure off the current schedule of being the only vehicle to which 990 can be achieved, this is going to, students will be allowed or be able to have more flexibility in their school day. The schedule might have some other transitions built into the day. It would be possible to maybe have, I don't know, a 15, 20-minute block of the day where students could have that simply solely put aside to meet with teachers. Because the pressure wouldn't be on the schedule to meet the 990 at that point. The 990 would be achieved through a variety of ways in a comprehensive fashion.
And also, I just want to say one thing. One thing we talked about in terms of the senior exhibition, which like Advisor-Advisy, has been an idea that has been floated around maybe since I came here, for a really long time. If this Advisor-Advisy may be the way to make the senior exhibition come to fruition, because if one teacher works with a small group of kids each year, if, for example, they're keeping a portfolio of some story, then perhaps that senior exhibition will somehow reflect the growth in each of those three years. And it might all really fall together nicely, but that's all still to be determined.
I didn't see the disconnect that Nick did about the curriculum piece because I remembered, and I don't know if I'm expanding the position beyond what you were thinking, but that sort of a humble person at each grade level would be working with, with all of the Advisies at that grade level. And that would be somebody who'd be a little more familiar with the curriculum. So that is one, by control, that was one support that you're building in around that. At least I would call that from the conversation we had earlier.
Yep.
Just terrific, just really a terrific, very, very thoughtful. I'm glad you kept in five staff.
One last, one last question. How does this whole program, how does this whole program, I guess, emphasize collaboration? And I only, I'm not, I'm coming up with that question because I guess that's the one word I didn't hear throughout the presentation. So I know that's, ideally, it's about, you know, everyone working together, but how does it, how do you see it? Because I see collaboration is a really, really key thing for kids. Okay? And I guess that one word is missing in this presentation.
The reason that that one word is missing is because we're not the schedule committee. We need a schedule committee to design a schedule that will allow for collaboration. What we've done is created a system in which the pressure for the 990 will not be on the new schedule. The pressure for the 990 will be taken off by the Advisor-Advisy because they'll be running hours outside their classroom. So that top-down pressure to have 990 accomplished will be done, taking the pressure off of that for the schedule committee to say, let's design the best schedule that works for kids. Let's design the best schedule that works for faculty and staff so that collaboration can be achieved. We're not that committee. But we're absolutely committed to working with that committee to make sure that that does happen. Because you're absolutely right, it's critical. We can't do that from our end, but we will make sure that we need guidance as we can.
I see it really critical in the whole Advisor-Advisy process in that it's a key skill to be teaching students.
That's what I thought. I think once you get it structured, that that's part of the beauty of being one adult with a small group of kids. And those students will form a collaborative group to help each other through the four years.
Because I look at something like this as the real dividend for it is going to be down the road when it really just strengthens your school culture. And just, you know, you know, the way it makes it all worthwhile.
And presumably, the kids in the group are now going to be 15 kids who've been best friends since first grade. It's going to be a random 15 kids who then will collaborate and establish relationships.
Thank you.
Great concert, you break for Choral Society this weekend. I'm not going to be a rehearsal. You're looking for something good to do this weekend.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, probably I might see it again. Mark, do you want to introduce the next item on the agenda, which is the preschool program?
I do, I do. I want to do is introduce, Sullivan, the principal of the Brown School. And the purpose of this agenda is to consider a proposal for change in the Brown School preschool model and offerings. And I want to welcome the preschool teachers that are here. And do you have your parents today?
There are, Anya Brenner is here from our school advisory council and they call her kindergarten teacher. And I do believe there are some current Brown School parents in the audience.
I do want to let the school committee know that this is a draft of a proposal that what we will do on December 9th, to be ready for December 19th, and ask Assistant Superintendent David Farrell to do analysis of the payroll. And also consider some of the questions that the school committee may have tonight. Consider those questions, answer those, and get ready for a final decision by the school committee on December 19th. Welcome Amy, and we just love you. She has some sense of nature.
Some of them today wanted to stand. Please sit if you feel comfortable. Maya Meneses is preschool teacher. Lisa Frischfeld, who's our speech and language pathologist at the preschool level. Jennifer Bingham, also a classroom preschool teacher. Giovanna Foster, preschool teacher. And Suzanne Simon.
Preschool teacher. So I think, okay, they're going to stand. I want to thank you for having us here tonight. This fall has been a little bit of a whirlwind in terms of our preschool program. There are a number of new things that have occurred this fall. First of all, for the first time, we've had a curriculum advisory board teacher at the preschool level. Thanks Angela Beck. Sue Simon has been serving as our cab leader for the preschool. So that's been a first occurrence where we've actually been able to break out curriculum mark between kindergarten and preschool on our early release days. Also, the Common Core standards came out, which we all know we participated in our Welcome Back to School ceremonies, learning the Common Core standards. But something different about the Common Core standards is the first time they were standards for preschoolers, older four-year-olds and younger five-year-olds. So we've been working with those standards throughout the past few months to learn them and to see how our program aligns to them. Also, this fall, we brought on, for the first time, an extended day program at the Brown School, which operates five days a week. And the hours are from 8:45 until 1:15. And Maya Meneses is a teacher of that program. So a lot was happening this fall and it gave us, caused as a team, to look at how we have been designing our preschool model for the past many years. First of all, the Brown School preschool is an integrated preschool, for those of you who may or may not know. And our philosophy and our mandate is to first meet the needs of special needs students in the Newburyport Public Schools. Basically, children who are identified as having special needs, on their third birthday, they transition from the early intervention program into the public school model. So public schools, local school districts have preschools to first meet their needs. And we find that philosophically, the best way to do that is to offer an inclusive, integrated model in which we will also enroll typical role model students to serve as their typically developing peers. And we feel that we're very successful at doing that. We have what I like to call a full-service model so that all of our teachers are duly certified, both by the DESC in elementary, early childhood education, as well as in special needs. And then we have a speech and language pathologist, an occupational therapist, a physical therapist. We have a school psychologist. We have a team facilitation leader. We have ECBA teachers and ABA teachers. And so whether or not children have special needs or not, all students benefit from the expertise of all of those people and also best practices. So over the past three months, we have been looking at that and also realizing that one thing that we would like to begin to think about is really delineating between a child's first year in preschool and a child's second year of preschool. So the first year being more of an introductory preschool year and then moving into the second year being a more pre-kindergarten model to align with the Common Core standards. So a lot of the work that the teachers have been doing on their early release days is talking about that. They've also gone to site visits to another local school this fall to look at their curriculum. And they've been coming back and having conversations with me about our model and is it best meeting the needs of our students. So one thing that we would like to consider is doing less of a multi-age approach and more of the preschool approach for three-year-olds and a pre-kindergarten model for our older four and five-year-olds. And I say five-year-olds because there are a number of preschoolers who are five, who missed the September 1st cutoff. So that's a little bit of what we've been looking at. Also, we've been finding that we have eight different programs right now at the Brown School that we run. We have a two-day program that meets on Tuesday and Thursday. We have children that come into a three-day program that meets Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. We have a four-day afternoon program that meets Monday through Thursday afternoon. Those three programs are all half-day programs. We have the extended day that I mentioned earlier. And we also have an ABA substantially separate program. And so it's a lot of juggling every day. And one of the things that we have found is that particularly our three-year-old children coming into the program, we typically save spots for them in either our Tuesday, Thursday morning program or our Monday, Wednesday, Friday morning program because we tend to enroll the youngest kids into those programs. Sometimes when children come into those programs at three years old, the teachers have consistently come to me and said, you know, it's not really enough time for some of our children with special needs. A lot of them might have services. They're being pulled out of only the five hours at their hair every week if they're in a Tuesday, Thursday model. Or the seven and a half hours at their hair every week in a Monday, Wednesday, Friday model. And really, an integrated program is what we're trying to provide for them and that makes it a little challenging. It also makes it challenging in that we have our special service providers or our therapists work, some of them on an itinerant basis or part-time. So maybe they're with us three days a week or maybe we're sharing them throughout the district. For example, our physical therapist works K through 12 throughout the district. And so in order to meet the needs of students' IEPs, we're pulling those people, you need to be here two days a week just on Tuesday and Thursday for this set of students, or three days a week just for this set of students. And it makes sometimes our scheduling of services a little bit more choppy than we would like it to be. From an administrator perspective, I don't always have all of my staff available to have conversations at faculty meetings or early release days or some of the initiatives that the district is trying to go forward with. For example, Ms. Bingham works a half-day, so her day ends once her morning classes end. Giovanna Foster also works a half-day. Maya leaves at 1:30. So it just makes it really difficult to have some of the common planning or time for conversations, much like what you may have heard in the previous presentation with the high school students looking for time to spend with their teachers. So all of those reasons, we began to have some conversations about, you know, how can our model best meet the needs of the students? One of the things that I've consistently heard from parents is that the two-and-a-half-hour day for a half-day is a little bit short. So we were wondering if we could maybe increase our half-day model. And also, we did some research with the school council to look at not only what other preschools in town were offering, but more importantly, what does the research say about the duration of early childhood years? And consistently, and what I have footnoted in the presentation, is that children that are enrolled in either extended-duration preschools or even full-day preschool programs consistently have shown that they are able to sustain their achievement and progress beyond their peers enrolled in half-day programs beyond their first grade year. That particular research was from the National Institute of Early Education. It was a study done in May 2006. So we tried to be pretty thoughtful about looking at a number of different things. So if I'm just going to try to highlight and run you through some of what is in the packet. Right now, we have, as I said, the different models. We have a Tuesday, Thursday group that has a total of five contact hours a week. Our three-day group has seven and a half contact hours a week. Our four-day group has 10 contact hours a week. We also have a five-day AM morning group that comes to school 12 and a half hours a week. Our extended-day students are enrolled 22 and a half hours a week. And students in our substantially separate classroom are enrolled 32 and a half hours a week. However, I think it's fair to say that not all of the time for all the students that might receive therapies is time that's involved in an integrated setting. Sometimes it's involved if the time is with their therapist. Currently, we have five preschool classroom teachers. And because they work, not all of them on a full-time FTE status, they actually equal 3.85 FTEs. So as I said, because only two of our preschool teachers at this time work full-time, the coordination of the following is difficult, staff, faculty meetings, early release professional development days, finding development days, finding time to meet for transdisciplinary meetings, which is a time when our classroom teachers get together weekly with all of the different therapists to talk about anything from student programming to curriculum, to any other topics, placement, screenings, things like that. Curriculum work, IEP meetings are always a challenge, in that when can we find time to have those meetings? And often, that means pulling the teacher from the classroom and having somebody else be in the classroom during those times. Another really big component of the integrated preschool is our work with the early intervention program. We begin to try to get students ready for our program. Six months prior to their third birthday, we'll receive notification from EI. And over the next six months, a number of things happen. Staff from our program, sometimes myself, sometimes some of the preschool teachers or some of the therapists go out and visit students in their home setting. We might go out and visit them if they're involved in an early intervention group. We begin to have discussions about what kinds of programs we can offer at the Brown School, and then eventually screenings and evaluations take place. We meet on those, and then we enroll children with special needs into the program on their third birthday. There's a lot of process that goes into that, a lot of hours and time with the staff to get ready for that. So, the early intervention piece is a big piece, because we want the transition from EI to the Brown School to be as seamless as possible. And a lot of times, we'll do screenings. We have a public screening coming up actually this Friday, and another one in March for any parent that might have any concern of their child in any particular area. That is something that public preschools are mandated to do, our public screenings. We also do screen any child incoming into our program once they're enrolled, whether they're typical or special needs, just to give us a baseline and help to establish classrooms. So, that's currently what our model looks like. We have five different programs, eight different sections. Some of the other coordination difficulties that we run into outside of therapies are pulling special events or field trips. Once in a while, we have asked children that might be only enrolled in our program two days a week, if they might come to school on a day that they're not necessarily scheduled to be there, to be a part of a concert or a field trip. We try hard to make that, you know, minimal, but sometimes that does occur. From an administrative perspective, I do do a lot of phone calls to parents and take-home Tuesdays, but it is hard to always be cognizant of which group is here today. And when I send this notice out, is it going to be timely for that group, because so many of our children come on different days. Some of our children in the preschool program also receive transportation, some of the children with special needs, and that certainly involves a lot of different schedules for the transportation of those students. So, as I said, we started to look at this. We began in September with the Common Core standards. We visited preschools as a part of our professional development day. I spoke to central office about some of these concerns that we had. And also, you know, ways to keep promoting, you know, the betterment of our school and enhancing our program. And we had the school advisory council meet, and we decided that we would like to do a survey. So, the first time that we considered this was, we were getting ready for the Early Education Fair held at City Hall, which was back on November 16th. It's the Newburyport Mothers Club. It's a little, like a little college fair of preschools, if you will, or kindergartens. And we thought, you know, it might be nice, we were curious to know, how can we reach families that aren't necessarily Brown School families already? How can we reach those parents? I ignored some of the pregnant women that came to it, but how can we reach some of those parents that might have two-year-olds out there? So we did survey them and said, you know, "We're thinking of offering a different model." And what we asked people in the first survey was, number one, would you be interested in a delineation between a preschool and a pre-kindergarten model? And then, number two, would you be interested in sending your child to a half-day program four-and-a-half days a week? Not four full days in a half-day, but four half-days, and then an additional half-day every other Friday. And that was because we were trying to think of what could we benefit on the half-day when the teachers don't have students on that Friday? And we were thinking of IEP meetings, and early intervention visits, and evaluation, and testing, and finding time to do all those things. We also asked parents at the fair if they would be interested in a full-day preschool. So, you know, I hear a lot from all different ends, but, you know, sometimes I do hear, you know, "A lot of other schools, you know, have full-day, they have extended hours, you know, they go to 6 o'clock." And, you know, not that we're able to do that, but, you know, we have seen really good success with our extended-day model this year. One of the reasons that we put that extended-day model in this year is we were going to have children coming out of only 4:45 to 1:30 hour half-day schedule with really significant needs, moving on into a six-and-a-half-hour kindergarten day. And we thought that there needed to be something in between that so that they could be successful. And so, we added some of the things that they don't get to experience in a half-day. We added the pragmatics of social groups and lunch, so that they could get used to that before they go into the larger cafeteria in the garden. And that has been really successful. So we thought about perhaps extending that to a full-day. So, in your packet, you have results of the first survey we sent out. And the first survey, as I said, began at the Early Childhood Fair, and then we made it available, following that, to our current Brown School families. We also posted it on all the take-home Tuesday links right up through the middle school. And we also sent it to the high school to send home on their portal. We tried to get it out there as much as possible. And so, the results we had of that, asking if they would be interested in a half-day, four-half-day model, with a half-day every other Friday, or a full-day model. We had 61 surveys that were collected. 12 people had indicated that they would be interested in a four-half-day model with an additional half-day on Friday for their three-year-olds. 15 people indicated that they would be interested in the same model, but a pre-kindergarten model for their four-year-olds. We also asked, and those both were AM programs. We have one person that said they'd be interested in the PM program, following the same model for a half-day for their three-year-olds. We had four people indicate that they would be interested in the PM program for their four-year-olds. We had 15 people indicate that they would be interested in a full-day program. And we had 14 people indicate that they would not be interested in those models. And those, the comments below, you can see, really spoke, I think, to all different ends of the spectrum. Some people weren't looking to enroll their children that many days. Some people wanted two full days, three full days. Some people wanted five full days from 7:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night. So as you read through the comments, you can see what people said their reasonings were. Following that, we had a school council meeting to review those surveys. And we also heard some feedback from some of our current Brown School families, particularly the parents who are currently, have children enrolled in our two-day program, that they were really, really hoping for a three-day program the following year. We wanted to make sure that their voices were heard. So we put out the same model, but then also asked if the current model was to stay the same, would you be interested in what we're currently offering, a two, a three, or a four? And this survey just went out to the Brown School, because we really felt like we were trying to target those families that are already enrolled in our program. And we had 47 surveys collected. Nine parents indicated that they were interested in the four-half-days, and the additional half-day every other Friday for their three-year-olds in the morning. No one was interested in the three-year-old PM program. There were five people that were currently in our school that indicated that they would be interested in the same model in the morning for their four-year-olds. There was no one that are currently enrolled in our school that would be interested in a PM model for the four-year-olds. Six people indicated that they really were hoping that we would still have the extended-day model next year, which was, that was something loud and clear, that they were really hoping for that in their second year. They maybe weren't quite ready to make the jump to full-day, but, you know, "Could you please bring back the extended day?" Four people that are currently at our school indicated that they would be interested in a full-day model. Four people indicated they weren't interested in any model. Eight parents indicated that they were interested in a two-day model. 10 parents indicated that they were interested in a three-day model. So, obviously, there's a little bit of variance between the surveys of parents that aren't at the Brown School yet and surveys of parents that are at the preschool. So we took this all into consideration to prepare our report for you today. And what we would like to propose is the following. We would like to add 15 minutes daily to our half-day program. Currently, children enrolled in our AM program come to school from 8:45 until 11:15. We would like to extend that from 8:45 until 11:30. Children that are enrolled in our half-day PM program come to school from 12:45 until 3:15. We would like to extend that to that they came in a little earlier, from 12:30 to 3:15. We overwhelmingly heard from parents that they weren't interested, and they come to school every other Friday for a half-day, that that was just really too hard for people's schedules. And so, we understood that. And so, what we would like to propose is that our half-day program would be a four-day program, Monday through Thursday, with Fridays off. So that would be a preschool AM model for three-year-olds, and a pre-kindergarten PM model for four-year-olds. Four-year-olds would also have other options, though. We would like to propose that we keep the extended-day model in existence with its same hours as this year, 8:45 to 1:15. And we would enroll four- and five-year-olds in that program, and possibly, maybe some older, like 3.9-year-old students, but that's negotiable. And then, offer a five-day, full-day, pre-kindergarten program from 8:45 until 3:15. We did have really good results in our first survey to parents that currently aren't enrolled in our school yet, that said we would absolutely enroll at the Brown School if they offered a full-day model. In addition, in the second survey that we sent out, we had another four or five parents that said that they'd be interested in that for next year. And we would keep our substantially separate ABA program the same. So in a sense, what this all means is that we are looking to change our half-day model in our two- and three-day offerings to four days a week, and extending the half-day by 15 minutes. We feel that the benefits from that would be that students would have more contact hours per week, thus resulting in improved student achievement, better kindergarten readiness. We feel that we could really delineate between the preschool and pre-kindergarten classes and align them with Common Core standards, and that we could offer progression of skills from one year to the next. We feel that more working families might be able to access our full-day program. We also feel that we could have IEP meetings scheduled on Fridays, because two of our teachers in the half-day program model would be free on Fridays to do the early intervention work, IEP meetings, home visits, curriculum work, common planning. They also could help to cover in the extended-day, full-day, or ABA classrooms on Fridays, thus limiting the amount of substitutes we'd need, and also ensuring that there are duly certified teachers covering those classes. We've also talked about one of our missions being that we would like to conduct trainings to local private schools on different topics, such as integrated therapies and standards. And from time to time, some of the private schools in the area have contacted me. Most recently, I was contacted by the Children's Castle, wondering if we were going to be doing a handwriting without tiers training. So that's something that we were hoping to offer to the larger community. We could do report writing, we could do our team consults with therapists on those days, and we could coordinate our transdisciplinary meetings. So, the difference in hours would be, if people enrolled in the four-day, half-day preschool program, it would be 11 contact hours per week. The extended day would be 22 and a half. The full day would be 32 and a half. So, I'll just keep going, so I'm sure there are a lot of questions. But we did take a peek at tuitions to inform us. And we looked at many school districts that offered a variety of models, but we tried to give you some school districts here that have similar models, such as this. In Haverhill, they offer four days, and their half-day rate is $3,200 annually for tuition. Needham also offers four days, and their half-day rate is $3,900 annually. Newton offers four days and a half-day rate, and surprise, they're a little bit more expensive, $4,503. I do wonder where they came up with the three. Their four-days extended is $6,521. Andover offers five full days at $5,265. Georgetown offers five full days at $7,600. Concord offers four half-days at $3,000, and four full-days at $6,000. Those are all preschool. We also tried to look at some private school tuition comparisons. And first, In Street should be changed to Newburyport Montessori. It's not In Street Montessori, which is grades one and up. This is the Newburyport Montessori, which is a pre-K. Their five-full-day model is $10,500 annually. The Children's Castle, which is located in West Newbury, and we do have a lot of children that come into our kindergarten program from there, has five-days extended day at $8,000, five-days half-day at $5,500, and three-days half-day at $4,200. You can also see we've included rates for the Immaculate Conception. They have a range, whether or not you're a parish member or not, I guess you get a discount. And we also put Mrs. Murray's in there, which offers the model that we're thinking of growing, the two-days and the three-days. So, currently, I've provided you with tuition revenue for this school year. Our two-day model, the tuition is $2,000 annually. Our three-day model is currently $24,500 annually. Our four-day, $2,900. Our five-day, $3,350. And our five-day extended day, $4,250. And I felt like those rates were pretty good in comparison to some other communities. Not all of our students pay tuition in our program. Students with special needs, two or more special needs, come to our program for free. They qualify for our program. And we also have the state sliding fee scale for students that just might, and for families that might need financial assistance. So I'd say, on average, there's about 20 students that either pay no tuition or have some sort of reduced rate. So this year, we are taking in $170,266. The proposed model for next year, we would like to set the rate at four days in the half-day model, Monday through Thursday, at $3,000 for the AM program, and $2,800 for the PM, offering a discount for the PM program, because there are 10 Thursdays during the year that those students do not meet due to early release, and we felt that they should be granted a bit of a discount for that. So, currently, people in our four-day program pay $2,900. However, they're going to school 15 minutes less per day than what we're proposing to offer for next year. So it's really not, I would say, it's not an increase at all. It's actually probably, probably a pretty good deal. For our five-day extended day, we are proposing to leave that the same. We are currently collecting $4,125 a year for tuition-paying students in that class. And our full-day model that we are proposing, we would like to collect $5,000 a year, trying to be cognizant in terms of the difference between kindergarten and preschool full-day rates. I have factored out about 20 non-tuition-paying students in this model, and look at a total projected revenue, if we went with this model, at $207,000, excuse me, $207,250. I subtracted that from what we're pulling in this year, and that gives us a gain of However, that gain is quickly ate up by the proposal of a staff analysis. As I said before, we actually have 3.95. I misspoke earlier, I said it was 3.85. It's actually three-point-nine-five. Our five teachers, that's their total FTE status. We would need to raise that by a one-point-oh FTE, so four-point-nine-five. And we would cost that out at around forty-five thousand dollars, the cost of that teacher. Currently, we have seven-point-six FTEIAs. We would need to raise that to nine-point-oh. Instructional assistance, that would be an increase of one-point-four. We've costed that out at twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars. So the total increase in staff is sixty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. If we subtract the additional projected revenue, what we're proposing is an increase of twenty-nine thousand, or about thirty thousand dollars, to run with the new model.
The room, who's down the vice chair? Do any of the teachers want to add anything to my presentation? Anything that the school committee can add?
I'd just like to say, I've been involved in teaching a two- and three-day model. And this has been something that has been talked about since I've been at the school since my sixth year. And it really is very, as a teacher, that the two- and three-day model is difficult for children because the consistency just isn't there for these kids, especially kids that are coming in from early intervention and being in class on a Tuesday, and then again on a Thursday, and they're not coming again till the following Tuesday. They're really at home so much more than they are at school. They just, at that developmental level, they're just, it's a very long time to be out of school. So you're kind of reinventing the wheel when they come back in on a Tuesday. I mean, it's not that they don't benefit from the program, but I think that they could benefit so much more from having a consistency of those four days.
Any of the other staff, do you have any comments?
I mean, I'll speak as the extended-day teacher. It's the first year of the extended-day model. Last year, I taught the five-day model. That was a great model, too, but extended day really does make a difference for my students, especially the ones with the most need. The more time they're in school, the more time they have access to services, they benefit from it. If Lisa's able to come into my classroom and run speech groups in the afternoon, it's just time on learning. It's timed in an environment that's language-rich, and they're with peers, and they have peer modeling. If they're at home with their parents, they just don't have that opportunity to model. Parents can provide great opportunities, but I just feel like, as an extended-day teacher, I'm able to provide my students with an environment that is really meeting their developmental needs. And speaking mostly, my typical peers are great, and they're great children, but for my kids with the most need, it's really the time on learning that they get, that I see the most benefit for them. And I think that's why we teach preschool.
And your eight forty-five to one fifteen? I have some questions, and I want to start with stats, because I'm a big stat guy. On your survey to sixty-one parents of kids who are not yet enrolled, how did you choose those sixty-one parents?
Yeah, that survey actually is a combination.
Let me tell where I'm going with this, because I think one of the key things as a school committee person is around how this all unfolds at budget time. And you can have this data right now, and it may be different. And I'm not here to criticize your data, but I just want to learn more about it, because to predicate a change like this on, you know, data that, you know, might have some holes in it would concern me. The other thing I'm thinking about is, as we move forward and hopefully build a new school, how is this going to be either replicated or developed in that new location? So I like what you're doing in terms of it being research-based and that it's better. I just, I just have some, as you've been doing the presentation, I've picked up some things I just want to ask you about.
Sure. Well, first of all, we came to propose a new model because as educators, we felt like research-based, that this was a better model that would provide better student achievement, better learning to all students. So the conversations began with the teachers, went up to Central Office. Dr. Corvall asked me to do a survey. I had no intention initially of doing two surveys. We did one survey that the school council and the teachers and I developed, and we began first to try to target perhaps families that we don't have access to. Maybe we don't, you know, we can't call them via the automated system because they're not current students yet. So we thought a great place to bring that survey would be to the Early Childhood Fair that was offered. So any parent that came there, and Jennifer Bingham and Giovanna Foster were with me that night, "Oh, we have a survey. What do you think? This is what we currently model. We're thinking of perhaps doing this. Just tell us what you think about it." So we had some surveys come back, included in the initial sixty-one that were from the fair.
Do you have a sense of, I guess I'm trying to get a sense of how many surveys you actually put out there, offered, and how many?
I do, because of all the surveys that we put out at the fair, and we put a footnote, Newbury Port Mothers Club, Early Childhood Fair. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I could get them for you. I think we had anywhere from about fifteen to twenty that came in from the fair. And overwhelmingly, those were in support of extended-day models or more days. Following that fair, at our very next Take Home Tuesday Day, the following, I think the fair was on a Wednesday night, the next Tuesday, when we tried to get all of our communication out, we put a survey out to the parents, the same survey, not only to current Brown School families, but also to Breziniham families, Mullen families, Knock families, high school families, to ask them to comment on it as well.
Anybody that might have younger children?
Yeah, because we don't know, I mean, there could be a child, you know, that's enrolled at a Mullen, and maybe they have a two-year-old at home. So we tried to get it out to the whole district in that sense. And then, as I said, we had some feedback. We had some feedback that people said that they were disappointed that the extended-day model wouldn't be offered along with a full-day model. So we put that on the second survey to see, you know, whether we have enough interest in both an extended-day model and a full-day model. And we also had some feedback from some families, mostly who are currently in the two-day program, that were hoping to go in their second year of preschool to the three-day program. And as with any change, we're feeling a little bit of a loss with that. And, you know, so we tried to put information out there, you know, if we were to run with the same model, how would you feel? And I think that we got, you know, a lot of really good comments that really were on all ends of the spectrum. And we certainly took that into consideration. We dropped the every-other-half-day Friday. But I think as educators, and for all the reasons that I presented with upfront, it just really is difficult for a public school to coordinate all of those different programs, the two and the three-day. And we feel that maybe it's somewhat meeting those families halfway, and that we wouldn't be having them come to school on Fridays, that we would be adding one more half-day. And it is a half-day model. We're talking about eleven hours a week if you come to the four-day half-day model. So that was the need, to do the second survey, is we wanted to, you know, garner that input and hear what parents had to say there. I would agree with you, though, Steve. If I was to run this survey in March, I might get different answers. I think that the Brown School and the school committee and the Newbury Port Public Schools definitely has a challenge, because we have to enroll children in preschool and kindergarten before our budget process ends. Most of the private preschools that I guess we would compete with enrollment for will be enrolling after the first of the year. So we can't wait and enroll students in March. That was one of the reasons that we originally were going to try to enroll in December, because of everything involved with the proposal of this new model. We have put that off until January, but very early in January, to give families some time if they did want to make a change. And also, new families coming in that might consider our model if we made a change. And the same thing will happen with kindergarten. Our kindergarten registration date is set for February twenty-ninth. We'll hold an informational evening on February first. But it's always, I feel as an administrator, a little bit more difficult to project what next year will look like, because we're not through the budget process and won't be for several months after we begin enrolling students. So I think that, you know, your points are well taken, because I feel them as well.
When you, I'm just comparing the current preschool offerings. I know the program types are different. Where do you see the, or where exactly does the extra FTE come in? Would that be kind of divided up, or would that be another person?
No, that's a really good question. So currently, we would have two teachers teach the half-day model. They would teach two classes a day. So one teacher would teach an AM and a PM. So if I was to look at Sue Simon, per se, hypothetically, currently, she teaches a two-day and a three-day morning and a four-day afternoon, totaling about thirty-eight to forty students. She would become a teacher that would teach Monday to Thursday, an AM in the morning, Monday to Thursday, a PM in the afternoon, and then on Fridays, we would do all those other things that I commented on earlier. If I was to look at Jennifer Bingham, Jennifer Bingham, right now, teaches our half-day program. She currently teaches a two-day morning and a three-day morning. We would increase her by point-five and make her a one-point-oh. And she would then teach a half-day, four-day AM model and a half-day, four-day PM model. Giovanna Foster, let's say, for example, she, right now, is teaching a point-five, five-day program. Let's say she wanted to teach extended day next year. We would increase her to teach the extended-day model and then, well, let's say, for argument's sake, Maya stays the same.
And she's point-eight-five.
Exactly. Yeah, actually, she's point-nine-five.
Okay, it says point-eight-five here. That's why I'm just, that would bring you four-point-oh-five if she's point-nine-five.
I thought she was point.
All right, this list is point-eight-five, that's why.
I think the IAs are the point-nine-five, excuse me. So it's not that we're bringing on new teachers, we're just increasing our current staff. And then your question for the new building, it's not that we're adding more physical classroom space. This is still within the number of classrooms that we currently have. It's just some of our classrooms that we're using at the Brown School right now are not occupied in the afternoon.
All right, and I just have to get back to, so those forty-seven, your second survey with forty-seven replies, if you will, or responses, what percentage of that, what's the response rate on that?
I would say forty-seven percent would be.
What, forty-seven? What does the percent, what does that represent? Is there, if you're total aggregate?
Well, currently, we have a little over eighty.
It's really important, because.
No, it's fine, as long as I can answer.
Okay, please.
Currently, we have a little over eighty students in our preschool program. Many of them are going on to kindergarten the following year. So I would say forty-seven is close to almost all of the parents, because I would have to get you exact numbers of how many children are in their first year of preschool. It could be more, because we also send that to kindergarten families that may have students coming in next year that aren't currently enrolled in our preschool. So it's a little confusing.
I think, well, I think in terms of the questions we're asking, if there's sort of additional requests for information, we should make that clear to you, so that when we come back to this on the nineteenth, if there were questions.
Yes, please, because I'd be happy to get you whatever numbers or additional.
So if we're not articulating that clearly now, school committee members should get back to you before the meeting.
First a comment, then a question. The comment is, trying to keep your program straight in this presentation may be busy, so I can imagine what your daily life is like. You guys are doing an outstanding job. The fact that we continue to build interest in our preschool program, I think is a testament to the great work you do. The question I have, I think you began to touch on it a little bit as teachers began talking about their reaction to the program. I think the presentation did a very nice job of presenting the window sticker on the car, but I'd like to see a little bit more of what the car looks like. Can you tell me what a half-day kindergarten day, I'm sorry, a half-day and extended day would like, where the differences are from a student's point of view?
I think I would look.
More snacks, more nap.
However, I want to certainly look to the teachers to answer that, and I think it would be fair for a teacher in the half-day program to give an example, and then for Maya to explain what the extended-day model looks like.
I think a good comparison with my class, mine is the five-day half-day. Mine are all pre-K. And Maya is the five-day extended, also pre-K. So all of my children will be going to kindergarten as well as Maya. So we collaborate a lot, but she has so much more classroom time a week than I do with my children. So if we are trying to pace together and trying to align with the Common Core standards, it's difficult for me, because I only have my children a couple hours a day. We do have outdoor play, we do snack, we have circle. So I really get a half an hour of playthrough learning during choice time, a half an hour for a four-year-old to get settled, find a peer, interact. I have students from the ABA program in my classroom as well, where for them, ten, fifteen minutes is enough time for them to get comfortable. And now I'm saying, okay, everybody, let's start to clean up, because it's time for us to go outside. And at one point this year, I had thirteen children in my classroom. As a snapshot, to look at the inside of my car, to take them to the bathroom, thirteen children eats up about a half an hour of my day to wash for snack, to take their coats off, to pack their bags to go outside. We're comparing it to Maya, who has that extended-day program. They're sitting and they're eating lunch. How many children are sitting down at home, eating a meal together, where Maya is providing that for them? And Maya could speak a little bit about her program, but we compare our programs a lot because it's the same children, the same type of children going into kindergarten. And Maya could talk about her program as well.
I can certainly speak to it, I feel like really well, because last year, I taught the half-day, and this year, I'm teaching the extended day, both for five-day models. And this year, I feel like I can breathe. I have to say, a half-day is not a lot of time to fiddle plot in, especially now that we're looking at the Common Core standards.
Can I just read one of the Common Core standards?
Yeah.
For example, this is a Common Core standard. Reading standards foundational skills, pre-K to five for pre-kindergartners. With guidance and support, demonstrate understanding of spoken words, syllables, and sounds, and phonemes. Recognize and produce rhyming sounds. Segment words in a simple sentence. Identify the initial sound of a spoken word. Generate several other words that have the same initial sound. Preschool standards.
So it's a lot to cover. I can read this year. My kids get an hour of choice approximately every day. Now, choice for preschool means there's usually three centers in my classroom that are hack-twos, and then the rest of the classroom is set up for developmentally appropriate play. And the play changes, and all of my centers, even play centers, are set up to support curriculum goals. So it's reading centers, it's dramatic play that's set up to support curriculum, like right now with the, a store, and kids can, you know, we're talking about money, and what are coins look like, what are dollar bills look like, that's what are our math standards. But it's just that much more time for the kids really to engage. This year, I can spend a solid ten minutes with groups of two children at a time, really working with them in pairs, and really getting that time to spend our curriculum and not feeling like, oh, I get five minutes with you, I got to move on. You know, I just don't have that rush. It just gives you time to breathe and really engage with the students, which is really important for preschoolers. You can't lecture to twelve preschoolers, especially since I have kids who are so vastly different in their needs and abilities. We still have circle time, and that's really important. But I'm able to have two very solid, separate circles. Last year, I couldn't spend nearly as much time in my circles, because then you just lose out on choice time. And choices to play is developmentally appropriate and needed in the preschool classroom. My kids also get lunch. Lunch is a great time, especially for my kids to have language and needs and pragmatic skills for speech. It gives them thirty minutes to sit at a table. They're sitting. They're sitting four at a time. There's an adult facilitating each table. And Lisa's able to come in, she comes in three days a week, three days a week and supports language during lunchtime. It's such a natural time to, kids work on conversation skill. They do have a 45-minute rest time that's mandated by the state, but it's a good time for kids to learn how to sit and be quiet. And they draw, they look at books. They're still learning. It's still an important part of our day. And I'm also able to add specials into my classroom. We work on art skills. We work on music, which is, we go to the library. So, they're getting all those things. I mean, music is about rhythm, timing. It really plays into early literacy skills. Art is the working on fine motor, working on sign skills, color mixing, all those fun things that are so preschool and preschool needed. And I can't even imagine what I would do if I could have a full-day classroom. There'd just be so much more time on learning and really time with my students. That's the difference. It's time and it's opportunities for learning.
Any other questions? We understand that if we do, looking over material, have questions, we'll get them to you so that we can get some answers for.
It is critical that we, one way or another, have a model to go with because families are anxious to begin the registration process. And we have publicly put it out there that we'll register on January 11th. So, however, I can help to provide whatever you may need as soon as possible.
Bruce, thank you. I want to thank Charles Sweeney for giving input in working with preschool council and with Amy. Thank you for all your work. So, still more work to do. I know you can do some work with Deidra. And we'll be back here in two weeks. All right, thank you.
Thank you. We will be having a brief executive session.
Your phone, Tom.
Brief. Public comment is our next item on the agenda, sorry. This is our last period of public comment for the evening. If anybody has anything they would like to say or share with the school committee. Again, for those who haven't been here before, public comment is your opportunity to share with us, usually not a dialogue.
I just have a brief comment. I have a kindergartner around the ground right now. I'm having a wonderful year and I'd love for my daughter to be able to go. And one of the biggest issues for working families, I know we've tried to work on this last year, is the lack of early care. When there's a 8:45, 9 o'clock start time, parents who work and have to be at work cannot get their kids there. And so, we were able to work it out this year with my kindergartner. But again, next year, first grade, he's going to start early. We're going to have this issue again, preschool, kindergarten. And I just would, you know, ask, I don't know, it seems if we start at 8:45, we start at 8:30 even. You know, that would allow parents to get where they need to go to be able to access these programs. And I hear this over and over with other moms. And we talk about it and, you know, I work in other school systems and it's, everyone's like, Newburyport doesn't have early care for a 9 o'clock start for kindergarten and preschool? And, you know, it'd be a shame that my daughter couldn't go because of 15 minutes, you know, 20 minutes. And a lot of us are transplants. We don't have family here. So, it is, it's difficult. You know, I can't hire someone to come for an hour in the morning to get my kids to school. So, we're just having to work it out and it's difficult for those parents. So, I just hope that's something that can be taken into consideration. And as Amy pointed out, other preschools, you have to enroll by January, February. You don't get a spot. So, you know, and that was another problem last year. You know, the early, early care comes out in March. Well, everyone's already enrolled their kids and they haven't done it at the public preschool because they can't, they can't go to work. So, you know, that's the other thing. If we could have schedules earlier in time so that people could plan and send their kids to the public school who want to be there.
Great. If we could just get your name and address. I'm sorry, I didn't tell you.
Oh, sure. It's Kristen Sharman and I live on 60th Street. Come on.
Any additional public comment? Dr. Lando?
4 Way Hall Drive. I want to be clear again, I'm speaking to school committee members and only school committee members. There are critical issues facing this district. I brought up two. You may not agree with the two I brought up. When you hear things about them, you know where I tell you all the time, seeing is believing. When you hear about proposals, they're proposals. I think you have an obligation that if you believe the topic that was discussed is not resolved with proposal is a critical one, then you have an obligation to bring it back to public discussion here so that we can have a resolution of the problem. I, the two topics I brought up, we heard from Assistant Superintendent Bick about a lot of proposals, a lot of negotiations. May very well be that that particular topic is not critical to you. There are other critical topics that I heard tonight, lots of good things. And again, I want to direct my comments specifically to school committee members. I am not saying anything to make less of any of the presentations that have been put forth here by teachers. We talked about N90. There's some people in Rome who are new to the room, when they heard that, are very concerned about the fact that only 20 to 25% of our students are meeting a state mandated requirement. It's nothing new. You heard some good things. I think, again, if you believe it's a critical issue, you need to be certain that it comes up for discussion monthly, quarterly, or whatever you believe is an appropriate time period to discuss critical issues. We heard about this another high school elective. This will be the third one in three years. If that's critical to you, you need to see what's happening on a periodic basis. We had two devocals here in the last couple of years with changes in the high school schedule. Our students need some stability. And then the final thing is we talked about electives here. You need to review those surveys in detail. What are the electives that are needed here? What are the electives that aren't wanted here? If that's a critical issue for you. You're talking about five FTE teachers coming back. You know as well as I, that's a difficult thing to sort of put forth in this district. So, what I'm saying to you is that, again, on issues that you believe are critical ones, even though they may not be what I believe to be critical ones, I would like to see you bring up more discussion on a regular basis in forms such as this. And I believe we have an obligation to do so as elected officials.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Deidra, can you give us a brief update on MSBA? I know that's not too moron, but.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I spent two days last week in Boston at MSBA with Steve Bergholm, Tony Kuhler from Gary International, who's your owners' project manager. The first day we spent on the Breznerheim Model School, working with MSBA and our team at MSBA regarding status of the project. We were reviewing the floor plans that the architect had generated based on the architect's site visitation here in Newburyport, which was the week before where we visited the Brown School, we visited the Breznerheim School. And the architect spoke with a constituency group of teachers, administrators, service providers to understand our educational program, particularly around the delivery of special education services for students. The architects went back after what they heard, made adjustments to the floor plan, which we're rolling out tomorrow at a meeting that I have with principals tomorrow at 10:30. From there, we started to talk about contracts and reimbursement rates and budgets and things like that. We spent about two and a half to three hours after the meeting with MSBA. They gave us the conference room. We stayed with the architects and continued some conversations regarding the model school. The second meeting was held at MSBA. And that meeting was for the purposes of being trained, both Steve, Deidra, and Tony, on actually how the reimbursement process to the city is going to work, what application software we need to use in regards to generating that reimbursement to the city, and how MSBA will be doing on-the-fly audits as we're paying bills, et cetera. Other key important dates moving forward, there is a school building committee meeting tomorrow evening at City Hall at 7 o'clock where I'll be updating the building committee on the two projects, on the meetings that we've had at MSBA. We also received seven proposals from architects, designers for the NOC-Mullen project last week on November 20th. The selection committee for the owners' project manager is the same team we're having reviewing those proposals from those architects for the NOC/Mullen project. It's much different, the NOC/Mullen than the Breznerheim Model School project. There are going to be three votes that the city is going to have at the designer selection board discussion on the architects for the NOC-Mullen project on December 20th at 8:30 in Boston. Those three votes are Mayor Holliday, Deirdre Farrell, and Steve Bergholm. We are going to listen to the OPM selection committee as well as the full building committee and present findings that they have to the designer selection committee meeting on the 20th. We get three votes, they get 14. So, we will leave that meeting with either A, a designer, or B, additional interviews for the designers based on the conversations we have with MSBA. So, things are moving. Things are moving quickly and expeditiously and I am open to any questions that you may have regarding that process. Dan and Donna, jump in as well with anything that.
Just that lopsided vote, do you get a chance to see the actual people who are voting? And do you present to MSBA why you vote the way you're going to vote?
Absolutely.
So, you're kind of selling your vote to them?
Absolutely, no question.
Because they're probably not going to be reviewing this quite as diligently as the other committees.
They're actually, their 14, their 14 votes are people that are in the business too, just like our OPM selection committee is. They are architects, they're someone from the inspector general's office, the designer selection board members, MSBA. There are people in the construction trades that are going through these seven proposals just like we are. Designers had to submit 20 proposals. We get to keep six. We had to send 14 to MSBA. So, they are going through those proposals just like we are. And the proposals themselves, once you start to read them, you're required to produce various certifications, various information on your current workload, and various jobs that you've done in the state and the Commonwealth in working with MSBA as well. So, those 14 votes are similar in a knowledge base as I would say our OPM selection committee was. And therefore, our OPM selection committee is going to be recommending to your three votes exactly the ranking and why you're ranking one first and why you want that first architect.
But you do get the chance to sell that to them.
You do have, you get the chance and opportunity to discuss. And then you get the opportunity to say, all right, we're going to agree to disagree, but still now we want to interview and try to move forward from that perspective.
Here are no other comments or questions. I would entertain a motion that be moving to executive session for the purpose of contract negotiation and not be coming out in the first session. Roll call vote?
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Menace?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Menace?
Yes, yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. DeKanda?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.